Calling to order the Monday, December 19th, 2022 Regular Meeting of the 39th Council of the City of Berkeley. Ms. Mitchell, would you please call the roll?
Councilmember Baker?
Here.
Mayor Pro Tem Dean?
Here.
Councilmember Gavin?
Here.
Councilmember Hunnen?
Here.
Councilmember Vilani?
Here.
Mayor Terbrack?
Here. Our first order of business this evening is the approval of tonight's agenda. Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Support.
Motion made by Councilmember Baker with support from Mayor Pro Tem Dean. Are there any changes? Seeing none, Ms. Mitchell, would you please call the roll on tonight's agenda?
Dean?
Yes.
Gavin?
Yes.
Hunnen?
Yes.
Vilani?
Yes.
Baker?
Yes.
Terbrack?
Yes. At this time, please stand for the pledge. I pledge allegiance-
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We now move to public comments. Remember, these are public comments for items that are not included on tonight's agenda. You will have the opportunity to speak on a specific agenda item while it is being considered. Remember, councilmembers will not engage you in discussion, but if your concern needs to be addressed by a member of city staff or Department of the city, please sign your name at the clerk's desk. When you come up to the microphone, please state your name and city of residence. If needed, I will give you three minutes, but I might be a little liberal tonight. I don't know if we're going to have a huge crowd. May give you three and a half if you play your cards right. There you go.
Yay!
Two minutes.
Greetings and salutations to this honorable festive and frisky body. This is Mike McGinnis, Executive Director of the Berkeley Downtown Development Authority, just calling to say happy recent birthday to Mayor Pro Tem Dean-
Thank you.
And happy birthday to Councilman Baker to come in a few days away, and thank you for being our liaison to the DDA board. That's it. Happy birthday.
You have more time? Thank you, Mike. Going once.
Can I?
My name is Lucy Pierce, and I'm a Berkeley resident, almost 30 years. February will be. I'm concerned about the lack of safety on Greenfield Road, because I'm a resident of Greenfield Road. The speed limit is 40, and everywhere else in Berkeley, it's like 30. Coolidge, 12-mile, 11-mile. It's all residential, and I just wondered who we can, how we can make that change, because there's all kinds of truck traffic on Greenfield now. You know, they've did a sting on Southfield, and it seems all the trucks are on Greenfield now all day long. And I'm retired now, so I look out the window and I see it all day. So I've talked to the Road Commission. They suggested that I come to a meeting and ask. I don't know if we need to sign a petition, but something needs to be done. It's not safe. We have kids crossing the street at Greenfield and Catalpa going over to the soccer fields to run, and they just don't do it much anymore. So I think it's a lack of safety.
Thank you, Lucy. We will be in touch. Did you sign in? You didn't? All right, perfect. Thank you. Anybody else? Seeing nobody else running up to the microphone, we will close public comments, and we'll move into this evening's order of business. First up is our consent agenda. Ms. Mitchell, would you please read the items on our consent agenda?
One, approval of the minutes. Matter of approving the minutes of the 39th Regular City Council Meeting on Monday, December 5th, 2022, and the Special City Council Ad-Hoc Subcommittee Meeting on Thursday, December 1st, 2022. Two, warrant. Matter of approving warrant number 1381.
Is there a motion to approve this evening's consent agenda? So moved.
Support.
Motion made by Councilmember Gavin with support from Councilmember Baker. Are there any changes? Councilmember Hunnen?
Yeah, just one small correction. In the regular minutes and the urban tree canopy study, it stated Ferndale has 37% coverage and Berkeley has 33. Ferndale, in fact, has only 30% coverage. I didn't want our neighbors to the south to think they were doing better than us. That was the only correction I had.
Thank you. We'll make sure that that is noted and reflected. Don't need anybody getting a big head. Any additional changes? No? Okay. Ms. Mitchell, then, would you please call the roll on tonight's consent agenda?
Gavin?
Yes.
Hunnen?
Yes.
Vilani?
Yes.
Baker?
Yes.
Dean?
Yes.
Terbrack?
Yes. Consent agenda has passed. We now move to this evening's regular agenda. Ms. Mitchell, would you please read item number one?
Recognitions, presentations. Matter of any recognitions or presentations from the consent agenda.
Seeing none, we will move on to item number two, please.
Presentation. Matter of receiving a presentation by Reina Emmons of PSLZ LLC of the annual audit and resulting annual consolidated financial report, and requesting the City Council to receive and file the CAFER.
Mr. Baumgarten, would you like to preface our presentation, please?
Certainly so. As you all know, and hopefully folks know at home, we go through a process every year where we have a third party come in and audits the city's finances to make sure that we are adhering to generally accepted accounting principles and then the government, the standards of the governmental accounting standard board, or GASB, as you often hear their acronym pronounced. This is something all healthy, well-managed cities do, and we're certainly no exception of that. And part of that process every year is to have our auditors come, report out their findings to council in a public meeting, and so we've come to that point in the process now.
Would you like to introduce our guest?
Yes, this is, as a motion mentioned, this is Reina Emmons from PSLZ LLC.
Well, thank you for being with us this evening, Reina.
I should mention, Mr. Mayor, as well, we are joined by Finance Director Mark Pollak, as well as Accountant Lori Fielder from our department. Both work very closely with our auditors.
Well, Mr. Director, Lori, if you have anything you would like to add, don't be shy. Reina?
Thank you very much. A pleasure to be here this evening and to present to you a very good report of the City of Berkeley for your annual audit of financial statements fiscal year ended June 30th, 2022. The city did receive the highest level of audit opinion possible, which is an unmodified opinion, meaning no disclaimers, no exceptions, nothing bad to report this evening. Additionally, the city does take the extra steps and does receive the Certificate of Excellence in Financial Reporting, which not all cities do that. That really is a feather in the cap of the City of Berkeley. You have consistently been doing that for a number of years, and that's, again, a team effort between the Finance Department and the auditors. So not to be taken lightly, that's why we have a nice thick book this evening. I just want to start out with a few highlights, and then I'm happy to answer any questions you may have. Starting out with your largest source of revenue, of course, property tax values increased this year 4.88%. Prior year was 3.5%. So that's a nice increase, and that's totally taxable values. That's certainly not your millages. You didn't raise millage rates. In fact, you had, as usual, Headley rollbacks on the millage rates. Also, the city this year received $1.6 million in American Rescue Plan Act funds. There were a number of dollar amounts released by the federal government, and I just want to clarify that I think some of those numbers were higher than that, but that is what the city actually received, actually in two tranches, they called it, 1.6 million. Now, that is not in the general fund fund balance. It's not shown as revenue yet. That will be shown as revenue when the city spends the money. So as you spend it, whether it's in one year or a number of years, that's when we'll show it as revenue, and it'll hit the fund balance. Total general fund fund balance this year actually decreased $397,000, so you dipped into fund balance. You had budgeted to go into fund balance $997,000, but appears that you slowed capital projects so that you only dipped in about $400,000. General fund fund balance is about 35% of your general fund operating expenditures this year. Another indicator I'd like to, I'd like to share with you each year is your building permit revenues, and that increased $73,000 this year. So that's, you know, we like to see that, and that, of course, is people working on their houses, new businesses, new homes, that type of thing. It's an indicator of the development going on within the city. The city did pay down $493,000 in debt, and that was all in the water and sewer fund. In significant capital outlay, you had ongoing street construction projects and your ongoing sidewalk projects, also some new water meters, and you're continuing with the sewer lining project. The MERS, MERS net pension liability stayed about the same as the prior year. You're at about $10 million. That's your total pension liability minus the assets you have set aside in trust, leaving you with the measure of the net pension liability of $10 million that pretty much didn't move from the prior year. Public Safety Pension, however, increased its net pension liability primarily due to you had significant net investment loss, and that's really based on the market value on the day of the measurement. So in the prior year, you had a significant investment gain on the investments, a 4.7 million. Well, this year, we had a loss of 3.4 million, so that pretty much wiped out a lot of the gains from the prior year. And that gives you ending net pension liability of $3.96 million for the Public Safety Pension. The MERS pension is funded 58%, and the Public Safety Pension is funded 68%. The, we did have, I did have charts in your packets, and really, there were just two things that I wanted to highlight with that, and just because of the cyclical nature of Headley, which is the rollback of the property tax millages, the, you'll see in the first chart a downward, on your operating millage, you'll see the downwards slope. Thank you. So the, and also, the, so what I noted in the audit was that the city is, you did put off some capital, significant capital projects this year, just so that you didn't dip so much in the general fund fund balance, and that's, part of that is just because your property tax revenues are slowing as well because of the rollbacks. Even though we're having taxable value increases, which we can't really count on from year to year, especially going into a year with possible recessionary-type indicators, the, you're putting off capital projects, that includes things like public safety vehicles that you're not buying, maybe you're doing a little, you know, you're, instead of doing that on an annual basis, you're spreading that out more. It's not a sign of distress in the city in any way, but it is time. I just wanted you to be aware of the trend of the Headley rollbacks, and also, that was the first slide, and the last chart was your general fund fund balance. And you'll, again, you'll see that downward trend in that, especially the last couple of years, you significantly dipped into the general fund fund balance. So again, just want to make you aware of that. It's something you need to keep an eye on, and, you know, potentially looking at Headley override, something of that nature. So with that, I'm happy to address any questions.
Before questions, Mr. Pollak, is there anything you would like to add or bring to light? Lori, anything else?
No, thank you.
So there, I'm sure council may have some questions as well, so let's start there with the things that we want to, one, a couple of the big things that Reina, you know, talked about, and especially with what she ended with in terms of the operating millage. But the chart we're looking at, it looks like it went from 9.3 in 2014 to about 8.1 right now, and again, that is going to continue rolling back. What is the impact that that has on our budget? Or potential impact, I guess, that it's going to have on our budget?
Well, really, without going to actual dollars and that type of thing, it's really, eventually, so right now, you're slowing down capital outlay, okay? But then, if this trend continues in this, in this manner, and those, you know, like it did the last two years, if it continues in years three and four, you will be cutting services to the residents. And I know this, the City of Berkeley, the residents are, you know, you've taken very good care of them, they're used to a high level of service, you have outstanding departments, and you want to keep it that way, and I'm sure the residents do as well. But that's why I just want to bring your attention to it. I want you to, you know, notice the trend, and the numbers are, you know, the drops are getting larger. So that's why I just want to bring that to your attention.
And that is not in our control, obviously.
Of course.
That is Headley doing that to us, despite what's happening, as you mentioned, with property values, because they can only increase rate of inflation at 5%, and everybody knows over the past 10 years, we haven't seen any inflation. This year, we are seeing inflation right now, so they have not been able to keep up with what the general, most of the residents may think has been happening, but the way that municipalities are funded, proposal A and Headley really cap that type of growth, and this is why we find ourselves in a situation where, how much, how many debt service funds did we have this year?
Three?
Oh.
No.
You don't have any debt?
We just didn't have-
Just in there.
None in the general, yeah, none in the general.
Right, so we had no debt, and still, we're losing revenue because of the way that Headley and proposal A are impacting our budget. And the last time we had a serious concern was probably 2009, and as you mentioned, we pushed off a lot of capital then. Luckily, the residents in 2014 were able to approve some mills to allow us to keep doing that and invest again in capital, and we're finding ourselves in a similar sort of situation, not necessarily recession-wise in comparison to what happened in '08, '09, but with what's happening in our budget. I think it's important for residents to understand that. It's not because we've gone out and spent. Literally, we just lose money in our budget every year. It just goes backwards due to Headley, and we can't really do anything about it on our own.
Respectfully, Mayor, that's the, so your three largest sources of revenue in the city, property taxes, state shared revenue, and investment earnings, and all three really out of your control. Property taxes, we just talked about that. State shared revenue is the revenue that the state of Michigan collects for income tax and sales tax, and if people aren't making money and spending money, that decreases, and they don't, and they distribute that to the local units. So if they collect less, you get less. No control over that.
Statutory piece of that has been a constant thorn in our side over the last 15 years, we'll say, at least, that I recall.
And investment earnings, the interest, I don't think, I think that's self-explanatory right now. It's really, there's no interest to be found, so.
No, look, the stock market's down historically 27% of the time, it's up 73%. We know it's going to be down from time to time. We just have to make the right decisions so that when it is down, we're not as adversely impacted. And a lot, you know, those, the funds especially that you talked about that are down will hopefully rebound before those things come due, but that's what happens with the stock market. Questions from members of council, so I stop talking. Councilmember Baker?
Thank you, Your Honor. Thank you for the presentation and for the thorough review of our city's budgets, and thanks to our finance team for their great work in helping ensure that we are able to best steward the finances that our residents entrust us with. In addition to the Headley issues that you mentioned, you also talked about the general fund and the fund balance and how we've been dipping into that. At our very last council meeting, we had extended our set of targets, ideal states for each of our different fund balances as appropriate, knowing that not one, you know, each fund has its own specific, you know, target or ideal threshold and things like that. So just would love to hear any additional thoughts that you may have in terms of where you think we're at now. You said like 35%, and the degree to which that that remains a healthy balance and provides us with the back, the backstop that we might need in case, in case things turn significantly dour for us.
Well, so the, so that 35% number that I mentioned, you, the city is very fiscally responsible in that you do have a fund balance policy. Most communities don't actually have that. That really, again, that's a monitoring process as far as, you know, you, council sets the goal, it's up to the Finance Department and the City Manager to keep an eye on that, and if it dips below, then you have, there's, it's laid out in your policy of the actions that you would take. Now, so 35% does not include things like, so that's total fund balance. That's not the unrestricted, unassigned portion of your fund balance, which is a smaller number. So things like, we assigned part of the fund balance for, it's 800 and some thousand you have, you have in the fiscal year '23 budget, that you are projecting to dip into fund balance. So that, we assign part of this year's ending fund balance toward that. So we're basically saying not all your fund balance is available. If you, if your budget does come through in fiscal year '23 the way you're projecting it, you're going to dip into fund balance 800 and some thousand dollars this year. So with that, it's a monitoring process. Right now, it's, you know, that's a solid number, but it's, but the trend, that's, you know, what I'd like you to keep an eye on.
Sure. Thank you.
Other questions? No? Okay. Well, thank you, Reina, for being with us, and again, you know, unmodified is great, that's what we want, but that does not mean that there aren't still things that we have to watch out for as we move forward, and I think we've done a good job of illuminating those things today. Thank you.
And could I just thank, you know, with sincere thanks to your, all your department heads, and specifically, you know, City Manager Baumgarten, Mr. Pollak, Ms. Fielder, you know, the entire Finance Department, and all your department heads have been wonderful, very accommodating, and we sincerely appreciate that. You know, first year is not always an easy task, but, but thank you to everyone at the city, and appreciate council's support as well.
Thank you. We now move on, Ms. Mitchell, to item number three, please.
Motion number M11022, matter of appointing a member to fill the current vacancy on City Council.
Is there a motion to approve M11022?
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve by Mayor Pro Tem Dean. Support. Support from Councilmember Hunnen. At the last council meeting, we heard from the top five applicants to fill the seat vacated of State Representative-elect Natalie Price. Since that time, councilmembers have had the opportunity to meet with candidates if desired, and tonight, we will move to appoint one of those candidates. The inherent problem here is the fact that we have only one vacancy, and no matter the outcome, four engaged residents will be disappointed, and their friends and supporters will be disappointed as well. And as a side note, I have received endorsements on a number of the candidates from folks in our community, which speaks to how well-respected you all are in the community. But the reality is only one can be appointed to serve right now. However, there is another opportunity coming up this November for all of you to be elected to this esteemed body by the residents. But to the business at hand, we follow the process outlined by this body back in 2017, and the final step is to make that appointment. But before we do that, let me tell all of you, those of you that are here, and those of you sitting up here with me as well, what will not happen, absolutely not happen, and that is discussing the perceived deficiencies of any individual that has applied to freely give of their own time to serve our city. If there is a need for discussion, advocating on behalf of your preferred candidate is fine. Denigrating any applicant will certainly not be tolerated, and I can promise you this, if there was ever a time for me to be a little gavel happy, I promise you it is tonight. So I suggest that if you don't have anything nice to say, then don't say anything at all, as I learned long, long ago and have followed most of the time. But let's figure out if that is going to happen. So at this time, we're going to go around, and each council member will have the opportunity to name their preferred choice, their top choice. As we go through, if we have a number of names, you know, more than three or more than two names or three names mentioned, we will have a roll call vote, and whichever candidate has the lowest number of votes will then be eliminated from contention, and we will keep moving and so on and so forth until we have at least four votes that are needed to make the next appointment. If there is a three-to-three tie, which is entirely possible without a seventh vote, we will have to engage in vigorous positive discussion until somebody ultimately relents and changes their mind. And again, I know we don't like people flip-flopping, but somebody's going to have to here if it's three-to-three. I apologize for that. The process, again, will conclude when four, when somebody has four votes. I will ask at that time for a motion to be made to appoint that candidate, and then I will call for a roll call vote on the entire motion, M11022. Counsel, are we clear?
Yes.
Yes, clear, at least on the procedure.
Mm-hmm.
Good? Okay. Councilmember Hunnen, I'm going to start over at your end, because I feel like I never do. I feel like I just by default start over here, and I don't know that that's certainly fair. So all you have to do is your preferred candidate, and then we will just go on, and we'll see how many candidates we get to discuss.
Mr. Michael Dooley.
Hold on one sec. Okay, good. Councilmember Baker?
Ms. Stacy Stevens.
Thank you. Mayor Pro Tem?
Michael Dooley.
Ross?
Michael Dooley.
And Jess?
Clarence Black.
Okay. As of now, oh, I guess I have to do one too. Sorry. I was wondering why I only had five. I am also, Michael Dooley is my preferred number one. Michael Dooley has four right now, Clarence Black has one, and Stacy Stevens each have one. But because we have a candidate with four already, which is a majority, I will ask for one of the three of you, since I am not allowed to do this, to make a motion, and somebody else to support it, to appoint Michael Dooley to the council.
I'll move to appoint Mr. Michael Dooley to the vacant seat on our council.
A motion has been made by Councilmember Hunnen. Is there support?
Support.
Have to be one of you two, most likely, since those are the only two who said that. A motion has been made by Councilmember Hunnen with support from Mayor Pro Tem Dean to appoint Michael Dooley to the vacant, vacancy on City Council. We can have discussion if needed. Anybody would like to? Keep it positive again? Okay, all right. Ms. Mitchell, then, would you please call the roll on M11022, Appointing Michael Dooley to the open council seat.
Hunnen?
Yes.
Vilani?
No.
Baker?
No.
Dean?
Yes.
Gavin?
Yes.
Terbrack?
Yes. Congratulations to Councilmember-elect Dooley. The official swearing-in will take place on January 9th. Let me know how that goes. That is a day that there may be a football game that may be of some importance to folks that live around here, should the football game on New Year's Eve go the way that we also want it to go prior to that. Go Blue. We now move on to communications. Ms. Mitchell?
Councilmember Vilani.
Councilmember Vilani, you are up.
Thank you. There's no updates from CEC and TAC, as we've had no meetings since then, and no new business from Berkeley Chamber as well, and just want to thank all of our candidates who came out, and it was really great getting to know all of you, and I hope I see some names in November as well, and stay engaged with our community. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Gavin?
Thank you, Your Honor. Planning Commission does have a meeting tomorrow, December 20th, at 7:00 PM here in Council Chambers. The EAC has not met since our last council meeting. I would also like to thank all the candidates who gave their time to sit down and talk. I really enjoyed getting the opportunity to hear about your experiences and your efforts, and look forward to everyone staying engaged, for sure. And then certainly hope that everyone has a happy and wonderful holiday with loved ones, family, and friends. And then, as many of you know, I believe since 2017, someone can correct me if I'm wrong, but Moon Beams for Sweet Dreams has been taking place each December. Community members from not only Berkeley but across southeast Michigan going to Beaumont, Royal Oak Campus to shine flashlights and remind pediatric patients that, you know, they're not, they're not alone during this time of the year. So I believe starting tonight and going through Christmas Eve, you can go there around 7:45 or so to be able to kind of offer that reminder, and that's all I have. Thank you, Your Honor.
Thank you. Mayor Pro Tem Dean?
Thank you, Your Honor. I, too, would like to extend my greatest thanks to all the applicants that applied for the City Council seat vacated by now State Representative Natalie Price. I learned something from each-
Natalie Price. I learned something from each and every one of you, and I'm encouraged by your willingness to want to serve this community. It takes a lot of guts and courage to do that, to put yourself out there, to make yourself vulnerable. So I applaud that in each and every one of you, and I do look forward to seeing you in the community, on the ballot, as we move forward in the city of Berkeley. So thank you very much. Parks and Rec update, just a reminder that the community center will be closed the week of December twenty-sixth. Parks and Recreation wishes everyone a safe and happy holiday season, and they look forward to continued events, programs, and time together in our parks, at our fields, and in our center in 2023. They're grateful for all of the participants all year and cannot wait to gather in the new year. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Baker?
Oh, thank you, Your Honor. Well, Happy December again, everybody, and I share my colleagues' gratitude and appreciation to everybody that applied and participated in the process to, to join us here on council and filling the vacancy. I likewise very much enjoyed each conversation, learned a lot from every person that I spoke with, and I'm very thankful to, to have that privilege to get to know more about the folks in the, in the community and the, and the great energy and talent that they bring, and I certainly look forward to remaining in, in contact with you all as we, as we turn the corner into another fantastic year ahead. The Historical Committee met last week's Tuesday. They continued their preparations for the hundredth anniversary of us, of this city as a village. We turned a village in twenty-three and then a city in thirty-two, so that one will be coming up pretty soon. The, the museum continues to display many holiday-themed exhibits and displays dating from back when we became a village up to the modern day. So please swing by and check that out at your convenience. The museum is open Wednesdays from ten o'clock until one o'clock, and Sundays from two o'clock until four o'clock, and then, and you can also contact them and learn more at BerkeleyHistory.com. Our Downtown Development Authority, DDA, board met the very next morning on Wednesday, the fourteenth. Topics included the continued progress on the Coolidge Crosswalks, the parking study, and the successful Merry Month events thus far throughout the city. And so I'd like to thank all of the, the volunteers, all the businesses, and most importantly, all the residents and shoppers and visitors to our downtown to enjoy everything that we had to offer, led by our esteemed executive director. We have our final Mary and Bright Shopping Night is this week's Thursday from five o'clock until nine o'clock. So please come out to that, and the great times in downtown don't end after Thursday. So please continue to come downtown and enjoy all that our businesses and, and experiences have to offer for everybody. And you can visit them at DowntownBerkeley.com. And finally, it was Terry Marshall who once said, "The holiday season is a perfect time to reflect on our blessings and to seek out ways to make life better for those around us." And yeah, 2022's had a lot of adventure for us all, a lot of bumps and a lot of highs and a lot of great things and a lot of craziness from this continued tri-poldemic that's going through, and societal pressures and financial issues and all this kind of crazy stuff, right? We've had significant struggle, struggles and obstacles to overcome. And let's celebrate the diversity in, in what makes each of us unique and special. So please, not only in this holiday season, but in particular this time of year, do something nice for somebody in need. Even a simple phone call can really help. And let's seek out ways to make life better for those around us. And as I often like to say, please stay safe and hug somebody you love because they need it. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Baker. Councilmember Hannon?
Thank you, Your Honor. I also want to thank everyone who threw their hat in the ring and participated. I'm always impressed with the amount of participation we have in the city and these sorts of things. You know, it just isn't the norm in much of the state or much of the country, and, you know, it speaks well of all of our citizens to have this kind of engagement. The Tree Board did not, does not meet in December. Their next meeting will be Monday, January twenty-third at seven PM. The ZBA met and approved an increase in the size of a already non-conforming porch, but they will not be meeting in January. The city's commercial district parking study has already started. I'm a member of that steering committee along with Ross Gavin and some members of the DDA and Planning Commission. I think it was a very productive start for the meeting, and we should be anticipating a public meeting to gather input starting in January or February. And then finally, I helped the city put together a, sort of a self-service map of homes and businesses that are decorated for the holidays. So you can go and add your own home or business to the map with or without photos. You can also nominate other homes or businesses that you think have nice decorations up, and that's located at BerkeleyMish.org/holidaymap. That's all I have. Thank you.
Excellent. I suggest you all take a trip down Oakshire Block and a half north and enjoy the lovely lights and, and arches that are all around. It's delightful. Mr. Baumgarten?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I have no printed updates, just want to wish on behalf of staff to the entire city, wonderful holidays and prosperous 2023.
Mr. Attorney, take as long as you like.
Thank you, Mayor. I've already shared this information with council before millions of viewers at home and all the ships at sea that may be watching this meeting. The city did receive a very favorable court decision late last week from the Court of Appeals in our marijuana litigation, which began almost exactly two years ago. And that was litigation brought by several of our applicants, or actually more than several, I think it was about ten, ten of the applicants who were unsuccessful in the license application scoring process, and they brought litigation challenging the lawfulness of the city's marijuana business licensing ordinance, as well as the, the procedure that the city followed in scoring the applications. And as I said, it's a very favorable decision, and it's favorable really on two levels, a local level and a statewide level. On a local level, the significance of the Court of Appeals decision is that it upheld the ordinance standards and scoring criteria that council members may recall, we very thoughtfully and thoroughly debated and discussed and developed over, over several months with the aim of trying to have a competitive process that will end up with applicants who we, who the council believed are, are best suited to operate in the city of Berkeley. And the court upheld our authority to do that and upheld all of our standards. It's important on a statewide basis because we know now there are at least a couple of hundred Michigan municipalities who are involved in the Michigan marijuana business licensing process. And although I don't recall any, at any time where the city of Berkeley volunteered to spearhead legal issues, it just kind of, just kind of worked out that way where we've now created some excellent case law for the rest of the state, recognizing the municipal city councils and township boards and village councils' ability to craft and adopt standards and, and application scoring criteria similar to what we did to arrive at applicants that they, as local officials, believe are best suited to operate in their communities. It's also an important decision on a local level because it upheld that the, or rather determined that the city's procedure in scoring the applicants was lawful. We had been challenged as having a, a process that violated the Open Meetings Act. There was an initial lower court opinion that agreed with that, but we've been vindicated at the state appellate court level, which I think is, is very important, not only as your attorney, but also because I know, having been part of the process from the development of the ordinance to this point, it has always been one of our paramount goals and objectives was to have a very fair, open, and transparent process. So I personally take great satisfaction in having this court ruling that vindicates that's exactly what we've done, and the city has, in all respects, acted lawfully. So, so yeah, a, a good decision, and can you tell I'm still glowing almost as much as Councilman Baker's lights? So anyway, I'd be happy to answer any questions, but that's a, a very good development for the city, and of course, we, we continue to move on with our process. We've now issued all our licenses. We're now in implementation mode, getting, getting some of these stores open, and so hopefully this is one of those situations, all, all's well that ends well.
Well, you certainly did take time, so I appreciate that. That's what I, that's what I get for asking. At the end of the day, we did everything that we thought we were doing correctly, and now the court also agrees, and, and we are now setting a precedent. So thank you, Mr. Attorney, for letting everybody know that. And now falls to me to wrap up our final meeting of 2022. CMN TV, you might want to get the dump button ready, just, just in case. It's a heads up. First, I do want to wish all the residents a very Merry Christmas, happy holiday season, and like 2020 and 2021, 2022 has proven to be another challenging year. Some challenges have carried over from the prior years, and some new challenges have appeared, but what hasn't changed is Berkeley's resolve. And no matter what challenges we face as a community or as individuals, our residents, our departments and staff always rise to that occasion. Unfortunately, though, over the past year, it has become increasingly evident that I can't necessarily say the same regarding myself. So a long time ago, back in 2007, when I was first elected, I was a twenty-seven-year-old laid-off teacher. Since then, I went from being a teacher to a principal, school principal, to becoming a financial advisor, no, they're not related at all, to last July, becoming the chief development officer at my firm. Also, back in 2007, I had zero kids. Now I have four daughters, mind you. As things in my personal life have changed, my ability to effectively lead the city has also changed. There are more demands on my time, and if I can't dedicate the amount of time required to sit in this seat, and not just sit in this seat, mind you, but to serve to the absolute best of my abilities because that's what this city deserves, then I shouldn't be the one to sit in this seat anymore. My family, my wonderfully supportive wife, I'm sure she's watching right now, and my day job demand that time. I am incredibly proud of what Berkeley is and what I've been able to be a small part of over these last fifteen years, and while I'm not leaving the city, I have made the incredibly difficult decision to retire as mayor of City of Berkeley. Not resign, it's his retirement. This will be my final meeting. The streets, I'm sure, will rejoice. The reign of terror officially comes to an end on December thirty-first, 2022, so I still got a couple of days left to, to tell people I'm the mayor. In 2023, we will have another new member of council to join Mike Dooley, who was appointed today. Mayor Pro Tem will slide over to her right to become the new mayor, and she will do a phenomenal job leading the city in conjunction with her colleagues on this council right now. I do want to sincerely thank all the residents for, maybe in error now, but believing in my vision and passion by electing me on six separate, very humbling occasions. We certainly didn't agree on everything, and that's cool, but I promise that every decision that I ever made and every vote I ever cast was based on what I truly believe was best for Berkeley. And if that wasn't enough, I'm sorry. I'll end with this. You know, I joked earlier at the beginning of this meeting that I, I kind of feel like Santa Claus right now, because I've been keeping a list and checking it twice. That was designed for me to go back on Facebook and, and re-enter and say some of the things that I haven't said over the last fifteen years, but I'm not going to do that. Instead, I think we'll just find out, I'll find out who my real friends are when I'm not this guy anymore. Motion to adjourn made by Mayor Pro Tem Dean with support from Councilmember Baker. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All close, same sign. Motion carries. The December nineteenth, 2022, meeting of the Thirty-Ninth Council, and my last meeting is adjourned.